The hour is now 4:30, ladies and gentlemen. I am calling the committee of the whole meeting to order, March 2, at 4:30 PM. We are here to discuss the Creve Court Park project, which is in collaboration with Bill Number 44. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway? Councilmember Fitch? Councilmember Webb? Councilmember Tracus? Councilmember Harder?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. The committee takes official notice of and admits into evidence all St. Louis County ordinances and resolutions. As an introductory remark, we are here to discuss this project, the origins of this project, the financial ramifications of this project, and basically all things around this. There have been lots of questions asked, and we are here to get information. On the agenda that says presentations, we will not have presentations this evening. What we will have is a question and answer period. And the folks that are listed here, along with I see some, a couple of people that I'm not, I don't know who they are, maybe their names will pop up. But along with those people, we are trying to get the information about this particular project. So, Councilwoman Dunaway, let's just, if that's amenable with the committee, we will start with some questions here, alright?
Great.
Thank you. And I have written these down so that I don't forget what I'm asking. This project is in Maryland Heights, is that correct? That is your district, correct?
Correct.
And where is Maryland Heights in this project? I don't see them as a participant or reader or having anything about this said from them. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so we have only heard Councilman Fitch, Harder, and I got a letter from a member of the Maryland Heights City Council last week, maybe the week before Chuck Caverly, who expressed his support for this project. As you may know, they ended up getting their ice rink in Maryland Heights. It just moved out of the park and up the hill. So I think they think this is a great project because there's a blight on the drive-by that they would like to see corrected.
So Councilman Haberly, I believe is what you said, is supportive of this?
Correct, Caverly, C-A-V, Caverly.
Okay, is there a Chuck Haberly on the council, or is this misspelled? Councilwoman Dunaway?
I'm sorry, is what misspelled?
I'm just asking, I have here Chuck Haberly. So that's incorrect, it's Chuck Caverly.
Caverly, Chuck Caverly is the council member from the Maryland Heights City Council that reached out to Councilman Harder, Fitch, and I.
Okay, alright. Now, we're looking at particularly the financial ramifications of this. In several of the comments, it's indicated that this will not cost St. Louis County any money. Can you elaborate on that, Councilwoman Dunaway?
Sure, so the project is being funded by the nonprofit who's here today, and we'll hear from them, I hope. And Tom Ott can get into more detail about this. But currently, it's a 40-acre plot that St. Louis County is mowing several times per year. Once this becomes a prairie, St. Louis County will go from mowing 40 acres several times a year to mowing some foot trails a few times a year. So the cost on maintenance should go down on an annual basis. There will need to be some burns from time to time, and I think Tom can talk more about that and what that costs and whatever manpower goes into that. But as I understand it, the cost is pretty minimal for us to maintain, and the cost to maintain goes down after this project.
So what is that, give us approximate cost of that.
I can't.
Can you do that, or do you need somebody else to chime in on that one?
That's a Tom Ott question.
Tom, where are you, there you are.
I'm right here.
An idea of what the cost will be, and let's just say this two, three years out.
So, right now, it's costing us about $1,500 per mowing. That includes staff time, equipment, and fuel. Then going forward, we're looking at possibly burning some portions of it maybe once a year. Again, that would be staff time, and maybe doing some invasive removals, spot treatments for those. I don't have an exact cost on that, but it's going to be much less than the $1,500 per mowing.
Okay, no, we're not looking at exact, we're just trying to figure out what will the county be on the hook for? And you're thinking that that will be in perpetuity, that it will be less than $1,500 a year, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, who is the nonprofit that you mentioned, Councilwoman Dunaway? Who, what is it, what is it? You mentioned a not-for-profit?
The Missouri, um, sorry, hold on. The Missouri Prairie Foundation is the organization that is paying for this.
And what is, do we have, I guess, a source of funding? Or how do they, what do they get their money from?
So I'm going to let them get into this in more detail, but they were awarded a grant from the landfill. I don't know specifically the name of the grant, but I think it was through the St. Louis Community Foundation. But they were awarded a grant. These grants have to be within four miles of the landfill. And the grant pool is for a variety of projects, to clean up the area, to take care of the lands that were contaminated by the landfill, and to just sort of like make up for some of it. It was a grant that was funded in part by Republic Services. But I think that we've got somebody, Elizabeth George, can probably talk more about the funding. And then we've got Carol Davitt, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, from the Missouri Prairie Foundation, who can talk more about.
Okay, now initially, this was supposed to be an ice rink. What happened, what happened, and why didn't it become an ice rink?
Yeah, so what happened was, is that for an ice rink or any enclosed structure, and Tom's going to have to correct me because I'm going to dyslexia this F6, 6F. Anytime parklands are designated as 6FF6, I don't know which it is, there can be no structures built on the land without a conversion application that is filed. And these conversion applications tend to be approved because there is a conversion of asset. So for St. Louis County to build an ice rink on this land, they would have had to take the 40 acres and then give back 400, 4,000, whatever. They would have to give more land, so it wasn't going to be a free thing. Now, our prior county executive didn't really seem to care much for rules. He never applied, he never filled out that application for the conversion. He just went ahead and raised the land, decided it was going to go forward without filing the appropriate paperwork, and of course, didn't tell anybody that he was supposed to be doing this paperwork or that it was being done incorrectly. And then once the Missouri, sorry, the Missouri Department of Natural Resources caught wind that some structure was being built or the land was being raised for a structure to be built without their approval, because they're sort of the go-between, between the Department of Interior and St. Louis County Parks. They're the ones that approve projects and give the up or down. And so when they stepped in, and the environmental group stepped in, the ice rink got stopped. And then they just moved it, you know, up the hill. So the ice rink still exists today. It opened about a year and a half ago.
Uh huh. Well, I noticed that you mentioned Steve Stanger, but as a county executive, he doesn't, he doesn't pass legislation. And so I'm looking at the legislation, which was sponsored by now-county Executive Sam Page. And I guess he was in support of that initially because it was an emergency, and he, that was an emergency legislation. Are you aware of that?
I don't, I don't, I'm concerned about fixing this blight, and whatever happened under the Stinger administration, I don't, it doesn't have any bearing to me on doing the right thing and moving forward and creating this natural habitat for Missouri wildlife right here in Creve Court Park. So I understand that you're wrapped up in what happened in the past. And I don't, I wasn't here, I wasn't on the council. This wasn't even a shadow in my life. I didn't see this coming, I wasn't paying attention. I looked at some of the stuff that's come over, but, you know, Steve Stinger pulled the wool over a lot of people's eyes, and a lot of pieces of legislation made it through. And, you know, I'm looking at who's on the council now, and only two of us were even here for all of that. So maybe Councilman Harder, Councilman Tracus, you have a better insight into how that legislative piece happened.
Well, and I didn't, I didn't, I didn't bring up Stanger. I believe in your comments at the previous council meeting is what you were indicating, which is why I said that Steve Stanger, as a county executive, does not file legislation or pass legislation. So it had to be some people on the council, and I too was not here, which is why I'm having concerns and asking these questions. Because I want to know what we're getting ourselves into, you know, before we make that kind of financial situation. Councilman Harder, did you want to chime in on that part? Since she brought you in as a, I don't want to say co-conspirator, but as one with some history on that.
Sure, thank you. As I remember, this transpired over a period of 2016, 2017 era. I came on the council right after 2016, right at 2016. So it was in the works, from what I remember, and the Iceplex was part of some investors that wanted to put in this new ice, two sheets of ice hockey in that portion of the park, and that there was a land swap as part of this. And it took a period of time back and forth. Councilman Page, at that time, it was in his district. He was in charge, he was in favor of it, and was able to kind of herd that piece of legislation through the council at the time. What transpired afterwards, from my recollection, is that it got sideways with the Economic Development Partnership over this property. And Sheila, who was the head of that at the time, went ahead and started moving dirt on a project that hadn't been fully funded or approved, and started changing the grade of that space, taking out trees, a shed, and some other things. And once the council caught notice of that, then other hearings and other things started popping up about what was going on here with this property. And so that kind of brings us up to kind of where we are today. The Iceplex got sideways with this. That project went away. A lot of people out there were against it. We had a lot of meetings on it where people came and spoke against the project on county parks land. And so things moved forward. The Iceplex people moved down the street, built a different Iceplex, and now we've got this vacant lot left with ruts in it and places they were going to put water retention areas. And that's kind of the way it stands right now. The only difference is there's kind of a scrub type of hardy grass growing on that spot, and a number of the trees are missing. So some of those trees were replanted, but they'll take 20 years or more before they're of any substantial benefit there. But Tom could probably give you a little bit more history than that, maybe tighten some of that up, because he was here under Harry Bess, who was the Director of Parks at the time. So maybe Tom could chime in, correct me if I'm wrong. And maybe Ernie as well.
Okay, Councilman Tracus?
Thank you. My version's a little bit different. For starters, my recollection is Councilman Harder started on the council in 2015. So I believe he was here during the whole time that this project was initiated and discussed. Two points to point out. One, both the then-county executive, who was a huge proponent of this project, as well as the executive director of the Economic Development Partnership, who fronted the project, if you will, are both now convicted felons. So that speaks volumes in terms of the veracity in which information was given to the council during that period. Secondly, when questioned about this, both the then-executive director of the Economic Development Partnership and the general contractor were asked specifically about the rationale behind the permit applications for the removal of trees and ground disturbance in the park. Both of them, without reservation, when asked repeatedly, testified before the council that the rationale for the request was water runoff and water retention. When confronted with the actual applications for the permits, however, nothing about water runoff was stated. The rationale for the permits was clearly stated that the purpose for the ground disturbance was the construction of an ice facility. So at that point, Councilman Harder was right. It rapidly, precipitously went south for the ice legacy people, as if off a cliff. And the only question then was whether or not they would be required to reclaim or reclaimate the ground disturbance which they had started. So there was significant misrepresentation, significant misdirection leading up to that point. And I think that the actors who did it, what happened to them speaks for themselves. So with that, I'll let Tom fill in anything that he thinks is appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, Tom?
Okay, good afternoon. So yes, I'll fill in a few blanks here. So Legacy Ice did come in, and they did grade the site. They created the water basins and used the soil from those basins to elevate the area where the building and the parking lots were going to be. Most of that work that they did perform was grading work. They did remove a metal storage building that we had down there for park operational use. And some trees in the disc golf area were removed once they expanded their footprint for that site.
So then we had, I'm assuming Legacy was a developer here. Am I hearing that correctly?
Legacy Ice was, Legacy Ice was the one that was coming in and doing the work.
Okay, and so they essentially, I guess what I'm hearing you say is they essentially kind of destroyed the area? Is that an appropriate word to say, or?
Let's say they regraded the area. They removed a metal building that we had down there. And they did remove some trees off to the south once they had to expand their footprint.
So after they, after they decided that this was no longer going to be, were they required to come in? Because I'm looking at us, we're having to do that. Were they required to come in and deal that back up or fix what they messed up?
So they were required to restore several things. They had to reestablish the turf. They had to rebuild the metal storage building that we had. And they had to fix some erosion areas around the basins. And they completed all those tasks by November of 2019.
Okay, so that was turf, the storage building, and what else did you say?
Erosion areas along the basins in several locations.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question of Tom?
Certainly.
So Tom, who decided what mitigation efforts that Legacy Ice had to fulfill to be released from its responsibility?
Several areas. St. Louis County Parks, because it was our maintenance building that we wanted to replace. But then also Mo DNR, they had to come in and restore the site to their satisfaction. And that included the re-establishment of the turf and taking care of the erosion areas.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to confirm that. Who said they had to do what, and whether they had done it?
Well, and if you look at, well, some of the exhibits that I'm looking at here are saying that they only had to replace grass. They required the legacy only plant grass. And so I guess that changed from you, Tom. I guess you required them to do more?
So is the Right of Entry Amendment got changed? Those things were included.
Okay, okay. And so you did answer me about the money that we're looking at, $1,500. And, yeah, where am I?
Wait, I just want to, can I clarify? Because I thought, Tom, you said $1,500 per mow.
Per mowing, right now. Once we take it over, we're only going to be doing the footpaths and some spot treatments of many, of any invasive plants that come in.
So if it's $1,500 per mow, how much are we spending per year to mow that 40 acres?
This last year, we mowed it three times, but that could vary depending on the growing season. We've mowed it as many as four or five times in a year prior to that.
Okay, so, you know, best-case scenario, $4,500 bucks a year, as is, versus, can you give us a dollar guesstimate on what it might be just to mow foot trails and some?
I'll say $1,500 to $2,000.
A year?
A year.
A year?
So half of what we're spending now, basically?
Or a third.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Dunaway? Yes, ma'am. So I am trying to follow along and don't have any historical data. And I see all these faces, and I don't know how they are tied to this project or what they do for the project. I've only heard Tom speak. And I don't know if we don't go through introductions or say who I am and what is my role in this or what am I supporting in this? But I need that for my benefit, because I don't know, I don't know these faces, and I'm not sure how they tie to the actual concerns that we have here today.
Well, let's start at the top with Carol. I appreciate that, Councilwoman Webb. Carol, would you introduce yourself? And I continue to forget that Councilwoman Webb is extremely new, so.
And also, if I may add, in your introduction, why you do or do not support this project would be a really great information to share as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dunaway. Carol, would you start?
Yes, ma'am, this is Carol David. I'm the exec, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Carol David. I'm the Executive Director of the Missouri Prairie Foundation. We are a 55-year-old land trust and conservation organization. And we applied for a grant from Bridgeton Landfill Fund, Greening, Gardening, and Outdoor Living Initiative. And I, to fund a project to benefit the residents who had been affected by the situation with the landfill. And in our original project, we had, our project site was the I-70, 270 interchange. And the project was to remove or treat invasive plants there and plant native grasses and wildflowers. But due to the pandemic, there were constraints with our partner, MoDOT. And so it looked like we wouldn't be able to meet the timeline of the proposal. So I contacted MoDOT and thought it might be less of a burden for MoDOT at that time if I look for some other sites. And so other sites for our projects were identified at Creve Court Park and also in the city of Bridgeton. And I'm on the call, or I'm in your meeting at invitation, I believe, of staff members who asked if I would be on to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. My name is Dawn Frederickson. And I work for the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, Division of State Parks. And why I'm attending the meeting is because Division of State Parks administers the Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund program. And Creve Court, Lake Memorial Park has been a recipient of Land and Water Conservation Fund monies in the past. And we are responsible, we have been delegated the responsibility by the National Park Service, which is the federal agency that provides the funds. Our state agency, the Department of Natural Resources, is responsible for administering those funds and ensuring that recipients comply with the long-term stewardship requirements of the Land and Water Conservation Fund program. And that is why we communicated, and the National Park Service communicated to St. Louis County Parks and Rec that the ice arena was not consistent with the Land and Water Conservation Fund program, and that's why the project had to stop. And we were also the ones responsible for working with Tom to ensure that the area was reseeded with turf. And then approved Tom's proposal to have a public meeting to query the public as to what they wanted in that location. And so that's why I'm attending the meeting. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Good afternoon or good evening. Elizabeth George with the St. Louis Community Foundation. The St. Louis Community Foundation oversees the Bridgeton Landfill Community Project Fund. We provided the grant to Missouri Prairie Foundation through our Greening, Gardening, and Outdoor Living to plant prairie within the four-mile radius of the Bridgeton landfill. And when the two sites that are now under discussion for, through this grant, one in Bridgeton and then this site at Creve Court Lake Memorial Park, when these two sites were given to us as alternatives to the original site, we were actually very, very excited because these sites provide more public access and education around the environment and the importance of green space and prairie for our invectments. So we're in full support of this project.
Rida, you're muted.
I'm sorry, Kim Diamond, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Hello, everybody, I'm Kim Diamond. I am the General Counsel and the Custodian of Records for the St. Louis Economic Development Partnership. The partnership manages economic development entities for the county, including the Industrial Development Authority, the Port Authority, and the Land Clearance for Redevelopment Authority. We were asked for documents relating to any funding given by either the partnership or any of those constituent entities to the Legacy Ice Foundation. And so I'm just here to answer any questions that you might have about the documents that we provided.
And thank you for that. I did receive your email regarding your abilities to respond.
Hi, my name is Kat, Kat Dockery. I'm currently serving on the county executive's staff. I believe I'm here today because of my previous role, which was where I served as Executive Director of the Open Space Council, which is a 50-plus-year-old nonprofit here in St. Louis, Missouri that has worked to create and conserve public open spaces. And I think Tom could probably share. We've worked a lot with St. Louis County Parks to create and buy some of the county parks and also invest probably hundreds of thousands of staff hours in the parks.
Thank you. Mike? Chapman?
Yes, I'm Mike Chapman. I am the county executive's chief operating officer, and I'm here because I am Mr. Ott's director, he's my director of port. And I support the project because the Parks Department made a pledge just over a year ago to the stakeholders and residents that attended the public hearing that we would restore this land, which was, it's to a, well, the damaged land to a prairie state.
Hi. Hi, um, I'm Mike Sutherland. I'm with the Department of Natural Resources. I'm the Director of Missouri State Parks. And in that position served as the State Liaison Officer to the National Park Service for the Land and Water Conservation Fund Funds. So that's, and I, I worked with Dawn and so that's, um, my role and we're, we're here to answer questions, provide information.
Thank you. Rich?
Yes, I'm Rich Germiner. I'm the Director of Policy and Legislative Affairs for the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, which is the, uh, agency that houses the Division of State Parks.
Um, is Elizabeth still there? Elizabeth, you are on here twice. Winston?
Hi, I'm Winston Calvert. I'm the Chief Strategy Officer in the County Executive's Office.
And Tom, we have heard from you.
If I could say a few words, Rida?
Certainly.
So again, Tom Ott, uh, Director for St. Louis County Parks and Recreation Department. I, I am in support of this project, uh, mainly because it's what we heard from the public when we conducted our meeting last year in February at the Maryland Heights Community Center. We had fifty-five to sixty stakeholders there and, and residents. And the, really, the outcome of that meeting was very strongly in favor of keeping that part of the park in a natural state. And the things that were mentioned were prairie and wildflowers specifically.
Um, so who can answer the question if, if we, the community wanted it to be, uh, prairie? Why was, uh, why was a ice rink proposed in the first place? Do you want to answer that?
That came afterwards. Because the, we were approached by environmental groups after the ice rink went away to conduct a public hearing. Or a public meeting to see what we could do with that plot of ground. We went into that meeting very wide open is the, we didn't know what the use was going to be. Gary considered it to be an improved site because part of it was elevated and up out of the floodplain where the building and the parking lot footprint was. So we didn't know if it was going to become a recreational use or a passive use at that time.
Okay. May I, may I ask a question?
Yes, Councilwoman Dunaway.
So Tom, had the Legacy Ice Rink never come along, would we have changed what was there? Or would it have just stayed a place where we had a shed and like people walked around?
It would have stayed the same.
Thank you.
Now, that's not to say.
Wait, I'm sorry, Tom.
I was gonna say, that's not to say we wouldn't be o- open to developing it into a prairie. We've got a lot of prairies throughout our park system. I could name a. Half a dozen parks or more with prairies in them now.
Point, the point is that unless this land had been disrupted by a project that didn't go where it was supposed to go. Like it wouldn't have necessarily been on anyone's radar to do anything. It's because the land was damaged that we felt a need to do something with it.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And again, my point is that the land was damaged originally and that's why I guess Legacy was there to, to propose, um, an ice rink. And so absent that, you know, what would have happened? We don't know. Um, now, i- i- in the last meeting that we had, uh, one of our constituents mentioned the fact that if. We don't spend this money, um, or whatever monies it is and we'll get to where the money is coming from. If we don't spend this money, it's going to go back to Republic. Is that the consensus of everybody here? Is any, uh, Elizabeth, I see you shaking your head there.
Uh, no, the, the funds, if not spent, would, um, would either return to the St. Louis Community Foundation to be re-granted out. To, or, uh, we would work with Missouri Prairie Foundation to find an, another site to, um, restore.
To build another, so that, that was inaccurate information?
Correct.
Okay, um, Councilman Harder? You're on mute.
Yeah, I got a, a question for Tom. Uh, Tom, at the time of the Legacy Life, uh, ICE people working on this project. Uh, they had a bond or an escrow that was collected to, uh, restore the property back to its original use. What, was that done? Who signed off on that? Was that money given back? Did we use that money to do some of it ourselves? How was that all handled?
So there was an escrow account, uh, Councilman Harder, um, the exact amount that was in there, I'm not sure. But it was to cover things like the building replacement, the turf re-establishment, uh, and to address the erosion areas. It took Legacy ICE about a year and a half to complete all those items to everyone's satisfaction before the funds were released.
And who signed off on that satisfaction?
That I'm not sure of.
Does anybody know?
Was there any money left?
And that satisfaction sign-off would have been like a year or so ago, right? Nineteen, you said?
Yes, I got a letter from O D N R in November of nineteen saying they were satisfied with the turf.
Okay, so the state signed off on it? At that point?
Uh, may I answer that question?
Anybody?
Um, so we, uh, approved the, um, restoration of the turf, um, with the acknowledgement, um, that. St. Louis County Parks and Rec were, they were going to hold a public hearing to determine how best to use that location. Um, and so we, we essentially approved the reseeding, um, and the re-establishment of, of the grass in the area to. Prevent further erosion.
But there was no, uh, issue with trees or the, uh, retention areas that were made? Was there any mention of that or restoring any of that?
Uh, no, um, because we were, um, going to give Tom the opportunity to have the public hearing to find out from the public what they wanted to see in that particular area.
Okay, so best to your knowledge, Legacy got their money back. They did the work, they spent their own money, then got their, their money back. So they're totally out of the picture by this time, correct?
I can't answer that question. That would be probably Tom could answer that.
Tom?
Yeah. Councilman Harder, uh, I would say, I know the attorneys helped redraft the amendments because they kept getting pushed back to meet the new, you know. We had to keep giving Legacy additional time to finish the work. So I'm not sure who signed those docu- who released the funds. I just know that we said that it wa- I, the Park Department did not hold the escrow.
Okay. Does anybody know who held that? Mike Chapman, maybe?
I have no idea, Councilman.
We don't just have, a- and you, you don't know how much it was in escrow, Tom?
It was approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the building and I'm going to say forty, forty to fifty thousand dollars to re-establish the turf.
Cause my information says there was one point four million in this escrow account. And about two hundred and fifteen thousand was spent. And so my question is, where's, where, where, who, who signed off on that and where did the rest of the money go? Crickets. Well, it raises more questions than we, than we are having answers here. Um, anyone else with, um. Any other, other, with any other questions? Uh, Councilman Fitch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'd just like to address for a minute, um, Councilwoman Dunaway said, why are we revisiting the past? Well, if you read the County Executive's press release announcing this great project, which by the way, I have no problem with the project. Um, he mentioned the former administration and Stanger by name multiple times in his press release. So how do we not talk about the past when it's in his press release that announced this to begin with? So, uh, my question for, uh, MoDOT, maybe Dawn or, um, Ms. David. Is why did, why did MoDOT, um, our D N R not follow through on this project? Why didn't this project come through you? Why is it coming through us? Whoever wants to address that.
Uh, sir, did you want me to answer this, Carol David with the Missouri Prairie Foundation?
Well, whoever, whoever wants to answer it. Why didn't, why did MoDOT not take this project and run with it?
Um, well, as I, as I mentioned, um, I did work with MoDOT initially and we, uh, you know, submitted the proposal. Um, and then, and it was awarded, um, and then this was right, this was last spring and the pandemic was. Um, affecting MoDOT's ability to, uh, to work on the project. And I, in the proposal that I wrote, I had a timeline, um, to carry out the work. And I was concerned that, uh, we wouldn't be able to make that timeline. Um, so I, uh, wrote to my contact at MoDOT and, um, expressed that it looked like it was going to be a burdensome project. And that I should probably look for some other sites and they concurred. So it, it, it's, uh, it, it's just simply a matter of. Capacity to, to get the project, um, moving forward. And, um, so then, uh, other sites, uh, and so then my revise, I asked the Community Foundation of the Ozarks. Excuse me, the St. Louis Community Foundation, sorry, I work with a lot of different group, the St. Louis Community Foundation. If, um, I could send in a revision and proposed, uh, sites in the city of Bridgeton and also this, uh. Forty-acre site at Creeve Core. And, uh, the Grants Committee was enthusiastic about it. So, uh, there, there aren't that many areas where you can do this kind of work. Um, within four miles of the landfill, which is a stipulation of the, um, Bridgeton Landfill, uh, Grant, uh, Program.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Frederick, um, I can't see your whole name. Is it Frederick or Frederickson?
Frederickson.
Do you have anything to add to that or representing MoDOT?
I, I actually don't represent MoDOT. I represent the Department of Natural Resources, um, and so we, um. We don't really have anything to do with the, the grant, um, that Carol is talking about. Um, what our responsibility is, um, to the park, um, is to ensure that whatever is done there, um. It's consistent with the Land and Water Conservation Fund stewardship requirements. Um, and I will say that under normal circumstances, for instance, if Tom had, um, they were proposing to do a prairie at another Land and Water Conservation Fund site. Within, um, St. Louis County Parks and Rec, the, the parks that, that they manage. This probably wouldn't, uh, be something that Tom would even ask us about because it's entirely consistent with. The operational and, um, grounds maintenance, um, responsibilities, um, in the Land and Water Conservation Fund manual. Um, and so it's a, it's, it's a completely consistent type of reuse, uh, of the facility. Um, and so we've, you know, we've approved, um. That proposal essentially for that location.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then, uh, going to, um, Ms. Dockery. So you currently work for the County Executive, is that right?
I do, Tim.
But this, you, did you meet the County Executive through this project? Is that how this started, this, the contact with him?
Um, I met, I believe, if I'm looking at my list of, um, I think I met all of the, the, uh, County Council, actually. During this project.
Okay.
All seven.
And I noticed that you actually wrote, uh, the Charter Amendment. Was that when you were in your position as in the Open Spaces Council? Is that what that was, when you wrote the Charter Amendment that would. Require the voters to weigh in on any type of, uh, project in a county park?
Hmm, so that's a great, uh, question. I'm glad you brought it up. Um. So I was the head of a coalition of environmental groups and conservation groups in St. Louis County who had come together to oppose the, uh, ICE project. That was one hundred percent in my role as the Executive Director of the nonprofit and not in my role, um, in the County Executive's Office. Those were two completely different times. Um. That coalition worked together to draft the language. Um, we met in my office, uh, in the Open Space Council's office, but it was actually, um. We took copies of the, uh, the city of St. Louis has a very similar Charter Amendment and so that's what we worked off of. Um, and we worked with groups like the St. Louis County Parks Foundation, um, Audubon, Sierra Club. Um, the Great Rivers Environmental Law Center and many, many more.
So how did you?
So I was, I was the person who was literally typing the edits as the group made, um, changes to it.
Okay.
Which is why my name appears in the metadata.
In any of those roles as you were working on this project, did you employ Mr. Calvert? Or your, any of your company or your nonprofits employ Mr. Calvert in this pro- in these projects at all?
No, we did not. Uh, my non-for-profit had, um, at the time, I believe, two staff.
Was there any discussion about bringing Mr. Calvert in as a lobbyist?
No, there was never discussion about bringing Mr. Calvert in as a lobbyist, no.
Okay, so the information that we received, you're saying, and if you had a chance to read what we received this morning, uh, regarding that topic?
I have had a chance to review it.
Is, is, you're saying it's not true?
On the question of, did I ask Winston Calvert to become a lobbyist for the Open Space Council? The, that is an absolute no.
Okay, so maybe you could explain what it was then? What was it? What was the, what was the discussion?
What was what discussion?
Well, you said on the, on that particular question, uh, that's an absolute no. So what is, what is, did, was there any relationship whatsoever with your previous role before you came to work for Sam Page and Mr. Calvert?
Yeah, I knew, uh, I knew Winston in my private life. Um, Winston, I'm sure that most of you know, and myself are both. Um, individuals who visit the national parks a lot. Uh, that's kind of what we have in common. And, um, this being a park issue, this is something that Winston cared about and he was a, someone that I, um. I worked with occasionally, just like I did with a lot of other advisors in the community to bounce ideas off of.
Okay, when Sam Page was initially in favor of this project of destroying the land and letting the ICE, ICE, uh, Legacy ICE Foundation build there. Were you having contact with him then and were you expressing your disagreement with, with his progress and his. Legislations that he sponsored it?
Um, it's honestly, that's pretty difficult for me to recall. I would have to go into my, you know, my emails from that time to determine if I was talking to. Uh, Sam Page or anybody else. If I remember correctly, I actually, um, I reached out to all of the council members. But only got meetings with specific ones. Um, Colleen Wassinger, Pat Dolan, um. Ernie Tracus were some of the first individuals that I spoke to about this.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Calvert, um, being one of the high-ranking officials on the ninth floor. You don't know where this escrow money went. Um, we've heard the question asked, there was one point four million that was collected, held in escrow. Uh, the vast majority of it was returned apparently to the Legacy ICE Foundation. And we heard Tom Ott said, no, we never held it and nobody else has said where it was held and who gave it back. Do you know?
I, no, I've not been involved in the details of the escrow at the Legacy ICE Foundation.
Can you tell us how you would find that out?
Um, I would probably ask Tom to find out.
Tom, could you find out, uh, who, uh, provided this escrow back to the Legacy Ice Foundation?
I, I will work on that. I will say, when I got involved, there was not over a million dollars left there in escrow. I'm going to say it was like maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars. And it was to clean up those projects that I mentioned. And I probably sent an email informing the attorneys that. The project was complete per Mo D N R after I got my letter in November of twenty nineteen, but I'd have to go back and verify that in my emails, Tim.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam. Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's all I have right, right at the moment.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Webb.
Yes, ma'am. I'm just curious. Ms. Catherine, when you were talking about your roles in the organization, I guess the open council and then helping draft that legislation for the charter change, was that a conflict of interest? Do you, the perception of a conflict of interest working?
Sure. So the Open Space Council's mission for the last, since 1965 has been to conserve and preserve land and water resources in the St. Louis region. That was, you know, my job was to make that sort of thing happen in the community and to continue that legacy. So I don't see this as a conflict of interest at all. I think this was.
Okay. So I'm hearing all these facts and trying to pull through them. And I think I may have confused that when you were working actually in the chief office. Okay.
Let me, maybe this will help explain. I began work at the Open Space Council in 2010. And I worked there until the beginning of May of 2019. I resigned from my position at the Open Space Council and began work as Dr. Page's Executive Assistant under the administration. I met one time. Yeah, in 2019. And I met one time with the Open Space Council following my resignation, and that was to transition information to their new hire, their new Executive Director. We had lunch and that was the only time that I have communicated with them about any projects since.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, I hope that helps.
Let me ask, is there anyone else have a question right now? Because I, I really want to ask, and I'm, Kim, I'm not sure if you're able to do this, but at one point were bonds suggested for this project? Do, are you aware of that? And if Kim can answer, maybe some of the others, you know, Chapman or somebody else who was on, you know, at the administration at that time. Did we, did we ask the partnership to, to float some bonds for us for this project?
Yes, there was a proposal to issue bonds by the Industrial Development Authority, the IDA. And there was a resolution passed by the IDA Board, which I did provide to everybody in which a memorandum of understanding was entered into with the Legacy ICE Foundation. I believe it was between the IDA and the Legacy ICE Foundation to to study the feasibility of issuing bonds. However, that MOU was subsequently terminated, I believe in 2017, toward the end of 2017. And the project did not go forward. The, the bonds were not issued. So it was caught, it was test, I guess they did some feasibility work, due diligence work to determine if they would issue bonds. And then ultimately, they did not issue the bonds.
Okay. And so, and I'm just trying to make sure I have this, this correct. So the monies for this project came from where?
That, that I don't know.
Excuse me, Councilwoman Days, are you asking the monies for the prairie project or the money for the ice rink project?
I'm asking initially because that was, that was the ICE project, correct? And so that was where the bonds were considered. Did I get, is that correct? The bonds were considered for the ice rink. And so, but we did not do that. So that nullifies that. And that was through the partnership as well, right?
The IDA consideration of bonds, yes, that was worked on by staff for the partnership on, on the IDA's behalf.
Okay. Well, I, I'm really interested in the fact that, that I have information that says there was two point, I'm in my paper, two point something million dollars that was in the escrow account. And only 215 to $20, I just mentioned it earlier. I don't know what I did in my paper, was spent from that. And Tom, your, your information is saying that that is not the case. You did not get 1.4, $4 million.
Britta, when I got involved, I'm going to say there was maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars left in the escrow. I've got to go back and look at the right-of-entry agreements because that's what spelled out the work that had to be done after they moved on.
So, so, so that's a lot of money between 100, 1.4 million dollars and 215,000 dollars. And, and I'm, I'm going to trust you, Tom, to go back and find out what happened to that money. That's a lot of money that just kind of disappeared in the thin air here. So, because obviously we can use that money, if that money is still available, and it's not going back to Republic. I think, as you mentioned, Elizabeth, that's not going back there. That's going back to you. And so we could utilize that money and therefore saving the county some money if that money is still available. But, but we definitely need to know where almost $2 million is, almost $2 million.
Madam Chair.
So, yes.
I just had a follow-up for Tom. Tom, this, the prairie planting project, how did that come to us, to the county?
So it was my understanding Carol David met with Dennis Hogan, our Environmental Resource Specialist, and they talked about the project. Dennis is the one that manages all of our prairies and wetlands in our park department.
Is that, is that how you understand it, Carol?
Yes, sir. And I met with Dennis, toured the site, and then Elizabeth with the Community Foundation toured it with me. And also we toured the, the site in the city of Bridgeton as well. And then I communicated with Dennis Hogan about, you know, what I needed to do, what the county wanted me to do. And Dennis spoke with Mr. Ott and Mr. Ott called me and asked me to send a letter to the, to him that just outlined our proposal for the project, which I did. That was in, let me look here. It was October 1 that Mr. Ott and I spoke. And it outlined the project in, in that letter.
And Carol, what made you think about going to Grief Court Park for this project?
A colleague of mine learned about the landfill project and thought it would be really wonderful if we could submit a proposal to create some prairie plantings or other native prairie, native planting. So in the city of Bridgeton, there are two bio-swell areas at the city of Bridgeton Recreation Center that I'm working with the Parks and Rec Department there. And those are going to be planted with more native plants to make them more attractive and help them filter stormwater better, which is their, their purpose. And then the, we, we looked at some other sites too at the city of Bridgeton, but they just didn't have as much public access or they just didn't fit with, you know, what the city of Bridgeton wanted to do. And so then also the, the Creve Court site. And so that's, that's how it came about. And
That's fine. Don't mean to cut you off. Tom, as I drove by the site this morning, I have to admit, I, I never saw it before it was damaged. The way it looks today, is it back to the state it was in before any of this conversation started?
No, the metal maintenance building is gone. And the basins that you see were created, that was a soil borrow pit basically to elevate the footprint of the parking lot in the building.
So why would that Legacy ICE be off the hook for restoring it back to its original state? If it wasn't restored to its original state? Can you answer that?
It was left that way because it was, Gary looked at it as an improved site because now part of it was up out of the floodplain.
So Gary Best, who you're talking about, the former person in your debt?
Yes.
Okay.
We didn't know, we didn't know, Tim, what we were going to do with the site until after we had a public meeting.
What was the value of the shed that was removed?
I'm going to give it an approximate value of 120 to 130,000 dollars.
And we, or at least Gary, thinks that we were compensated for that by bringing some of that area up out of the floodplain?
The building was replaced a half mile down the road in the park.
With funds from the escrow?
Yes.
Okay. And, and you know what the cost of that was?
Not the exact cost. They were not required to share that with us. We just know what it cost to build it originally.
So going back to this, the prairie agreement, I, we've seen no contract saying who's going to do what. We've seen a request to accept funding. Is there a contracts that says who's going to do what, who's on the hook for future? Is there anything like that?
So that was being developed by our department. Bonnie Diaz, our lease manager, is working with Carol on that document.
Is that something we'll see before the legislation would move forward? So we can make sure we're good with what the contract says?
We can forward that to you, yes.
And how long it'll, will it be till then?
I'll check with Bonnie to see where we're at with it.
Like next week? It could be ready by next week for us to look at?
Uh, let me, before I give an answer there, I need to ask that question.
I don't know about the rest of the council, but I would feel more comfortable before we move forward with this to see that before we move forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Carol, well, not Carol, you, you know, no, you were, that's Dawn, I think with DNR. So, so we, you, you had some seeding there and, and has that problem been resolved with whatever happened with whatever Legacy did? Is that, has that problem been taken care of? And that would either be you or Tom, I guess.
I will answer that we had several site inspections where the seeding had not germinated and taken hold. And so we conveyed that to Tom and Tom then conveyed that to the contractor and they did fix that problem. And we did sign off acknowledging that the site had been restored in November of 2019. And I, when I say restored, I don't mean restored to its previous condition, but in a condition where they could go forward then and talk to the public and find out what they were going to use the site for in its current state.
Okay. Now, and I, I heard you mention, Tom, some plans. Do we have, do we have plans as to what is going to happen here with the, with the Prairie Foundation? Do we have plans from them as to what they're going to be doing?
So the Prairie Foundation was going to purchase the seed and have a contractor install that. But there's also prep site work that has to be done. The vegetation that's there now has to be killed off. That usually takes two or three times to do that. Then the seed would be planted. They would also do what's called high mowing to get rid of the invasive or competitive vegetation that would be there, working against the prairie plants. Prairies take two to three years to establish. So they could, they would also be possibly doing some, some burns in the first two to three years as well.
And you, and you did mention that earlier. So are these plans written down anywhere where you could send us a copy of that?
I could get a list of that probably from Carol, but it's things like big blue stem, little blue stem, side oats, grama, Indian grass. That's just to name a few of them.
Okay. Well, yeah, that would, that would be helpful if we can, can look at that. Any, any other questions? Any other concern, Councilman Tracus? You're on mute.
Thank you. Thank you. Tom, just a few questions. How long have you been at this? And I, by at this, I mean managing public green space.
Started with this department in 1983.
And prior to your starting with the department, what type of experience did you have with respect to, or get ready for the working with public green space? Whether it was going to school, training, whatever?
I've got a Master of Science in Environmental Studies.
Okay. Now, with respect to the condition of the land prior to the disturbance, okay? By that, I mean prior to the disturbance in preparation for the ice rink. Okay? You with me?
Yes.
Okay. Compared to today, after the reclamation that's been done to this point, in your considered opinion, is the land more usable now than it was prior to the disturbance?
It's more conducive for what we're trying to do moving forward. The basins created some water habitat there to attract wildlife. And again, part of it's elevated, so it shouldn't flood. That would also help the prairie plants that are out there now, that we want to put in there now.
Again, the, the shed that you mentioned, how old was it prior to being torn down?
Probably less than two years old.
And right now we have a new one, less than how far away?
It's approximately a half mile down Marine Avenue.
And the fact that it's a half mile down Marine Avenue, does that make it any less convenient?
No.
So for all intents and purposes, the shed being taken down is of no consequence at this point?
No, it is not.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Councilman Harder.
Yes, one, for Tom, we talked about 40 acres. If this is going to be a prairie habitat, are you going to use all 40 acres or will, is there a fraction? Will there be other uses for other portions of that 40 acres in this plan?
The goal was to plant the entire site with, with the prairie, other than what's currently the basins.
So be basins, some walking paths, but it will be 40 acres of wildlife prairie.
Yes.
Okay. And so there's no other use for picnicking or any other use in there other than walking paths?
There's, there's other parts of the park that are already designated for that. That was one of the things that came out of the public survey as well. They, 69% of the people did not want to see it used for recreational purposes, but they were looking for more passive and natural areas. And that got us higher vote is 89%.
And you said we have other prairie properties in the county. Could you name a few of those and how are those managed?
So those are managed by the department. Again, our Environmental Resource Specialist, Dennis Hogan oversees those, but he gets also help from other park staff members when we do things like our annual burns. Right now it is burn season. We burned a portion of Lone Elk Park today. So there's a prairie in Lone Elk. There's a prairie at West Tyson. There's prairie at Spanish Lake, Supassage, Queenie, Faust, McDonald. Those are just some of the parks that have prairies in them now.
And will this be the biggest of those?
No.
So 40 acres is not the biggest?
No.
What is the biggest?
There's some other prairies. There's one that's 47 acres right now, and that's at Fort Bell Fountain in North County.
Okay. Thank you.
Jim, anyone else with any questions at this particular point? Because I think we do have some public comments here. Is that correct, Diane?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
The, the one thing though, before we do this, I want to make sure that we recap what we're looking at. We want to make sure that we have a written plan for what is going to happen on this particular property. We want to know, at least I want to know about the escrow money going from 1.4 million and utilizing 217. We did get the information about the MoDOT denial. I guess you assumed that this was not an appropriate project for that. If I'm not stating it correctly, just let me know. All right? And then, I, I'm sorry, Elizabeth, yes?
Yes, Madam Chair. I, I do want to set the record straight. Earlier, it was stated that the escrow money or the whatever was left from, from the Ice Rink Foundation would come back to the St. Louis Community Foundation. That is, that is not correct. The money that would come back to the Community Foundation would be the dollars allocated for the actual Missouri Prairie, to the Missouri Prairie Foundation for the prairie restoration. Those are the only funds that would come back to the St. Louis Community Foundation.
And where would the rest of the, where was the rest of the money go? Where would that go?
We have had nothing to do with the escrow. That was never part of the St. Louis Community Foundation's work. We we only have had the, we've only controlled the grant money that was made to Missouri Prairie Foundation.
Okay, and that was as a result of a settlement from Republic Trash People, right?
It was a settlement from Republic Services and the state of Missouri. The Department of Natural Resources is represented by the State of Missouri's General's Office in two thousand eighteen. The majority of that settlement was for the monitoring of Bridgeton landfill. And there was a portion of the of the settlement that came to the St. Louis Community Foundation as a community betterment fund for the Bridgeton landfill target area.
Okay, well, again, thank you for that clarification, Elizabeth. But again, we we need to know where the rest of that money is, what what happened to it. We have, we still, no one has answered the question about who released the money from the escrow? Who who did that? And so when you're dealing with these kinds of monies, one point four million dollars is a lot of money in my book. And so I I just think that that's something that we really need to, we need to find that out. So that's that's, Tom, I guess that's the assignment for you, if you will, that we can look at that and figure out where those monies are.
I have I have a question, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Councilwoman Dunaway.
Carol, what is your timeline? Like, at what time, at what point do we need to approve this project before you lose your funding and it goes back to Elizabeth?
Yes, I'd be happy to address that. I believe the funds need to be expended by twenty twenty-four. But we definitely want to, you know, we would like to to move forward as soon as we can. And as was mentioned, yes, the county did draft an agreement and send it to me to review. And I am just about ready to send it back to the county and that and to address the council member's question. That lays out the responsibilities of the county and the responsibilities of the Missouri Prairie Foundation. And I also just wanted to mention that. So then, once, once I know that it has been approved, then I will send a request for proposals to landscaping, you know, native plant installers to submit proposals. And I would share those with Mr. Ott. So that is the process. And of course, I would be overseeing that, but so I just wanted to clarify that that is the, that is the the process. The Missouri Prairie Foundation, we own and manage original unplowed prairie throughout the state, mostly in southwestern Missouri. We also do prairie reconstructions or plantings as well, which this would be. This is a prairie planting. You can never recreate an original prairie or you can never recreate any kind of original habitat. But I think that this prairie planting will be, it's very important to have native plantings in terms of their benefits to monarch butterflies, pollinators, thong birds, water filtration, carbon storage. So I I think it's an exciting project and I'm looking forward to working at the, with the city of Bridgeton as well as on this project if it's approved. Did I answer your question?
Councilwoman Dunaway?
Yes, you did. Thank you very much.
And you did say twenty twenty-four?
Elizabeth, I believe that is the timeline. Is that correct, Elizabeth, on the ending date of the grant of the St. Louis Community Foundation grant?
For, yeah, for you to expend the the dollars, that is correct.
And and also just wanted to note, no, no funding has been, we have not received any funding, just the, just the announcement of the award.
Correct. Okay, and how much was that award again? I'm sorry.
The award is for, and this was in the letter that I gave to the county, three hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, which would also pay for the projects in the city of Bridgeton. And I hope some funding for outreach and education as well to, you know, help, help citizens who've been affected by the landfill to to learn about these properties. Perhaps some workshops on on, you know, landscape, you know, gardening with native plants. All of those things I would be, you know, working on with the St. Louis Community Foundation and the you know, those involved in this project and with the city of Bridgeton.
Thank you. So we do have some time. Any other questions, comments at this particular point before I turn it over to Diane for public comment?
Carol?
I'm sorry?
Carol, this is Tom Ott. To address that timeframe, I'd like to throw in that there are milestones that you're trying to meet with this project as well. This is not something that she's going to start in twenty twenty-four and finish in the same year. So it's something that she would start and this would develop over a three to four year period of time.
And and we have to have allocated the funds by July two thousand twenty-two, so.
And and hopefully with the plan will include that, what what we're talking about. You will give that to us in the plan and, you know, what the milestones are. And that that's, that's what we're looking for exactly. Thank you very much for that. Any further comments or questions from those here in the last minute before I turn it over to Diane for public comments? Anyone else?
Catherine? Thank you. I just wanted to extend my thanks to the Missouri Prairie Foundation and the the Community Foundation and Tom Ott. You know, as a citizen who uses Creve Court Lake Park and, you know, of course, enjoys the beauty there. This is a really great project and it's something that you all and your, you know, your respective organizations have invested a lot of time and effort in. And I want to be sure to thank you all for that. Because at the end of the day, this is something that really benefits the residents of St. Louis County. And we appreciate you making an investment here.
Thank you. Diane?
Yes, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we've received twenty-one total comments. Of the twenty-one, sixteen of them are a form letter. And of the sixteen, four people included an extra sentence or two. So I am going to read the form letter and then read the extra comments submitted. I will then read the additional five comments received. So from Brian and Ina Ferris, Kelly Van Pamel, Mary Minehart, Sarah Schroder, Kelly O'Leah, Patty Colick, Teresa Larson, Leah Truitt, Charles Schmidt, Steve Barry, Danielle Albia, Jessica File, Erin Jungbluth, Bonnie Winkler, Pat Mahan, and Pam Hanson, they submitted the following comment. As members of the St. Louis-St. Charles Wild Ones, supporter of St. Louis Audubon Society, plus frequent visitors to Creve Court Park, we urge you to pass Bill forty-four. This bill would allow Missouri Prairie Foundation, MPF, to prepare and plant a prairie on the forty acres that were denuded of old growth stands of, I'm sorry, denuded of old growth stands of trees and vegetation during grading for the failed ice hockey rink project. Whenever I drive past this flat, grassy plot, I am heartsick about the damage done to bird and insect habitat. The current state of this plot provides no ecological benefit. The proposed MPF prairie project would rectify this blight on our park. Bill forty-four does not cost St. Louis County any money. And we urge passage of this bill, which will benefit both wildlife and visitors to the crown jewel of the St. Louis County Park system, Creve Court Memorial Park. And then Erin Jungbluth added, the current state of this plot provides no ecological benefit as a monoculture of non-native mowed grass. The proposed MPF prairie project would rectify this blight on our park and provide much-needed habitat for pollinators and birds, along with the many people that enjoy watching them. And from Bonnie Winkler, I have many fond memories of my time spent at this park and this improvement would be a great improvement and encourage the return of missing wildlife to the area. With the pandemic, more families are looking for just such places even more. And from Pat Mahan, the damage to that specific area was atrocious. As someone who had visited that site pre-demolition, it was a very rich and diverse area, supporting species that are not commonly found in the St. Louis region, let alone that readily accessible to the public. Excuse me, that readily accessible to the public. We can only hope that the damage be be reversed and that our native flora be restored. With the native flora restored, hopefully in time, our native fauna will again begin to flourish. I was astounded to have heard that site was destroyed and mortified to have seen it. And from Pam Hanson, help us save our natural wildlife, which includes plants, bees, butterflies, insects, birds, and so so many other nature-related objects that are too numerous to list. And now from Matt Rush, I strongly, strongly encourage you to pass the forty-acre restoration project at Creve Court Lake Memorial Park. As a member of both the St. Charles Wild Run, Wild Ones Organization and the St. Louis Audubon Society and a supporter of the Missouri Prairie Foundation, I can attest to the wonderful work that these organizations do to bring both ecological support and diversity, along with great beauty to the community. This restoration would be a wonderful benefit for both wildlife and visitors, the latter no less because of the former. As more and more ecosystem is removed, these islands of prairie serve as a safe harbor for so many of the beautiful birds, butterflies, and other wildlife that we all enjoy so much. While the removal of forty acres of habitat was a tragedy, this can serve to enrich our community in an impactful way, yes, for wildlife hug a tree, but also for the enjoyment of natural beauty so close to home. Thank you for your consideration. From Lorraine Stringer, support Bill forty-four. I support restoration of the land bulldozed at Creve Court Memorial Park. And from Karen Meyer, I am writing regarding my support for creating a native prairie on the land at Creve Court Park where the ice hockey arena was originally proposed. Many large native trees had been removed even before the project was officially sanctioned and before the public was given a reasonable opportunity to give input. After that was settled, the public was asked to give their input and the majority envisioned a passive nature area to enjoy. I'm so pleased that we now have the opportunity to restore this spot as a natural site to encourage and support a variety of wildlife. I am particularly pleased with Bill number forty-four because grassland birds are in decline, mainly because of habitat loss. Dick's sizzles are one of the bird species that had been seen in this area in the past. And creating prairie in this fairly large expanse will encourage those birds to thrive here. Eastern metal lark is another species that will be encouraged to feed and breed in a native prairie as well as various native grassland sparrows. It's even more encouraging to know that the Missouri Prairie Foundation will be providing assistance with the project. The users of the Fifi Greenway, which runs through this land, will have an enhanced experience alongside the installed prairie, giving wonderful opportunities to view, enjoy, and learn about the diversity of the natural world. I live fairly close to this wonderful park. I bike and hike there, volunteer during trash bash, tree and shrub plantings, invasive honeysuckle removals, maintenance of the native plant gardens, and help with box monitoring. Thanks to all of you who understand the importance of providing habitat for wildlife, while also allowing us the opportunity to enjoy a true nature experience. From Herb Hubner, I live in Seven Pines subdivision near Creve Court Lake Park. Bill number forty-four puts a prairie on the big empty field left open by the proposed ice arena. Given climate change and the fact that the area is in the water runoff area from the Missouri River, this is an ideal place to put a prairie. I'm a member of St. Louis Audubon, Ring Conservation Home, Webster Gross Nature Study Society, and Missouri Prairie Foundation. If you put a prairie on this part of the park, that should enhance the number of great birds in the park and it will be a great place to hike or ride on the bike trail. Getting the assistance of Missouri Prairie Foundation is super. Their leadership is highly expert and they manage great prairies throughout the state of Missouri. The county has an excellent habitat expert in Mr. Dennis Hogan to manage the area. Think of people walking by and seeing beautiful flowers and butterflies. Maybe we'll get more bluebirds to live nearby. Creve Court Lake Memorial Park is enjoyed by many people from near and far and is a stopping place for many birds as they annually migrate. This prairie would be adjacent to the Great Rivers Greenway Trail and also would be a great place for school and scouts groups to learn about prairies. Please support this bill. And our last comment this evening is from Angie Jungbluth. As a middle school science teacher in Missouri for twenty-five years, a park ranger at Arches National Park in Utah for two summers, a citizen scientist who has conducted bird surveys in Missouri for fifteen years, including Creve Court Park with its fabulous trails, I am pleading with you to pass Bill forty-four. If this bill would pass, it would allow the Missouri Prairie Foundation to plant a prairie on the forty acres that was supposed to be a hockey rink. Why are prairies so important? One, only one half of one percent of Missouri's original prairies are left. Yes, sadly, that was one half of one percent. Number two, Missouri prairies hold the most diversity of life of any biome on the planet. Whoa. Number three, the populations of our birds have been in decline in North America since nineteen seventy, with a drop between twenty-five to thirty percent. Grassland birds have been hit the hardest, showing the biggest decline. Number four, the plight of a variety of insects, including monarchs, depends on native wildflowers, many of which grow in prairies. Number five, prairies remove and hold more pollution from the atmosphere than many forests do. There is more, but I need to make my point here quickly. Please allow this forty acres to be planted as prairie. It will make a huge difference. This bill does not cost St. Louis County any money and I sincerely plead with you to pass this bill that would benefit both wildlife and visitors. Thank you for your helping with the stewardship of our extended backyard, Creve Court Park. Madam Chair, that's all the comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank all of you for your participation this evening. I think we all have our homework assignments and I am, it's good to know that we are looking at twenty twenty-four, but with milestones in between. I do recognize that. And so when we get that, we will have a plan that we can move forward with this. And I do appreciate all of your attendance this evening. Thank you so much. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Thank you so much. Take care.